Welcome to our first meeting for the 2022 year and our new council. So Madam Clerk, if you could mind starting with the role call, please.
Yes, Councilor Bouchard, here.
Mayor Boulay.
Here.
Counselor-elect Brown.
Here.
Counselor Champlin.
Present.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Counselor Keach.
Here.
Counselor Kretovic.
Here.
Counselor Mattson.
Here.
Counselor-elect McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Here.
Counselor Nian.
Present.
Counselor Pierce.
Counselor Pierce is coming back from a place of vacation and he is getting his luggage and said he's thinking of us.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Here.
And Counselor Todd.
Here.
All right, so we'll start with the smart hand.
Have you raised your right hand? Well, they were all gonna do it.
I want to move this along.
It's just all about me right now.
Come on, Tari, come on.
Tara was last year.
I was a lot skinnier back then.
I, Jim Boulay, do solemnly swear.
I, Jim Boulay, do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Jim Boulay.
I, Jim Boulay.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will affirm and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me as mayor.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me as mayor.
For the city of Concord.
For the city of Concord.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Laws of the state of New Hampshire.
Laws of the state of New Hampshire.
The city charter.
The city charter.
And ordinances of the city of Concord.
And the ordinances of the city of Concord.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, we all actually join me if we don't mind.
Your Honor, procedural question?
Sure.
Since Counselor Fennessy and I are in the midpoint of our four-year terms and technically are still sworn in from two years ago, should we sit this one out or should we stand in ceremony and we be sworn in anyway?
You remain seated.
Thank you.
For the rest of you, if you wouldn't mind joining. So, are you okay? Good, you're all coffee. I was gonna test you, see how much you remember. All right, you mind raising your right hand? I state your name.
I, Mr. Brown.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And to the state of New Hampshire.
And to the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Mr. Brown.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
All and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As a city councillor for the city of Concord.
As a city councillor for the city of Concord.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations. Of the Constitution.
This is what it's gonna be like for nine, two years. Laws of the state of New Hampshire.
Laws of the state of New Hampshire.
The city charter and ordinances.
City charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Concord.
Of the city of Concord.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, everyone. Okay, so now we have, we have the nominations for mayor pro tem. Is there someone who has a motion to make? Counselor Fennessy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to nominate Counselor Candace White Bouchard for the position of mayor pro tem.
Thank you very much. And there's a second. Motion made and seconded. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure, briefly, thank you, Your Honor. I think that there's no question that Counselor Bouchard has an extraordinary commitment to the city of Concord, to all of its people and to the staff here in the city of Concord. I think she's already done an excellent job representing the city in your absence, Mr. Mayor, and I would urge my colleagues to support this nomination for Counselor Bouchard as mayor pro tem.
Thank you very much. Counsel Champlin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that Counselor Grady Sexton has hit the nail on the head. Counselor Bouchard has really been an outstanding mayor pro tem for the past two years. I think she's also an outstanding councillor. She's done a marvelous job of representing her constituents in Ward Nine and representing the city as Counselor Grady Sexton said in your absence, and I heartily second Counselor Grady Sexton's motion.
Thank you very much. Anyone else standing ready for the question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll pose. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. So, item seven was our last item of business, and that is the council committee assignments. I got the last person today to send in their requests, so I wasn't able to complete it because I didn't have all the information. But Janice will be sending out, now that I have everybody's request and where they like to be and such. And we're trying to accommodate most everybody for all their requests. There's some, as you can imagine, a little bit of overlap where some people have named the same committees and there's only so many members allowed on each one. So we're making a few choices and a few adjustments, but for the most part, we're trying to accommodate everyone as we can. And tomorrow afternoon, the clerk will send out all of the assignments to everyone. Okay? So now's the opportunity for anyone who would like to make comments and anybody like to say the... Counselor Todd?
I'll start, Ward One. We'll start with number one.
You always start.
Well, I would just like to thank all the voters for Ward One for their continued support and faith in me. It's been a real honor and privilege to serve the folks of Pennacoke these many years. And it's been a challenging time, I think, for people in Pennacoke. Change is always difficult, and Pennacoke in particular, I think, has gone through a lot of changes recently and I'm sure more to come. But I know that the folks of Pennacoke have strong determination to continue to work and support their community. And I think that we can look forward to a lot of positive effects and benefits from some of the work that this council has done over the past several years, particularly in regard to infrastructure improvements for Pennacoke, but also with regard to their support of the new development at Exit Seventeen, which I think will really be a game changer for the community, as well as their continued support of the affordable housing that has gone into Pennacoke recently. So I also, of course, would be very, very remiss if I didn't right up there thank my family and my wife, who is here tonight. Thank you so much. Without their support, it's really not possible, I think, to run for council. You really need to have your family backing you up, supporting you, understanding why you're doing what you're doing, and being able to live with all the time commitments that you have to make as councillor. As we know, this is really pretty much a volunteer position. But I have been very grateful for that, for my family's support, so that I'm able to give back to the community in this way. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's all. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything else? Counsel Gray.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know what microphone. I know it's kind of muffled because of the masks, but I want to express my deep appreciation to the residents of Ward Three that have given their confidence in me over the past several years to serve in this chair, and it is something that I'm truly grateful to represent. One of the things that is changing for this year is the ward lines, and Ward Three was significantly changed geographically. So there's a number of streets and houses and people that I no longer represent, but I want you to know that the councillor is sitting at the table here with me. Well, Earl, of course, is absent, but we'll cover for him later. But Counselor McNamara, Counselor Brown, my ward has been divided basically between the three of them, but I want you to know that you have every confidence in them and they will continue to support you, and you can still reach out to me and I will direct you to the correct councillor while we learn our new ward lines. And of course, to my family who didn't come tonight because they're all busy and one of them's cooking dinner. That's what happens when you're on the council. Thank you so much.
I do would like to thank the constituents of Ward Four for putting their trust in me and for voting for me, and I hope that they will continue to feel comfortable coming to me and sharing their concerns. And I especially am appreciative to all the city councillors here who, when I come to them, they're caring and they share their knowledge with me. I'm very grateful for that. This is an incredible learning curve, and I'm enjoying what I'm learning and for the many things that I will be learning in the next two years. So, thank you to all of you and thank you to the Ward Four city constituents and to my family who are also home busy.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Upday for that one today, I guess.
Counsel Brown?
So I'll start off thanking my family who is here, and I'm grateful for your support. Thank you very much. I'm also thankful for my supporters, my friends, the voters and residents of Ward Five. I am really looking forward to working with my colleagues here at the table, the mayor and city manager, and the stellar city staff. I'm looking forward to developing our economy, addressing the climate crisis locally, and really striving for a healthy, equitable, and safe community together.
Counselor Grady Sexton, motion?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am extraordinarily grateful to be back at this table with fellow councillors and to be able to continue the important work that we have to do. There's a lot of additional work, especially in the midst of this pandemic, and I am really grateful to be amongst all of you in order to figure out how to do that together in a united way. And I'm also always very grateful for my family for supporting me in all of my efforts and in the way that I choose to support my community. So, thank you. It's great to be back.
Thank you. Counsel Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I want to acknowledge my mom is here. She's in the second row. She worked for the state, starting in 1963, I believe, for Governor King, and then in the executive constable for another 30 years. And as you all probably know, my dad worked for the city for 30 years. So whether they intended to do it or not, they instilled this sort of value that you don't sit on the sidelines. You jump in, you make a difference. And it's important to me for folks to recognize that and not just throw hand grenades at the system, but if you're not happy about the way it works, then do something about it. So, anyway, those two gave me that respect, so thank you to you.
Thanks, Paul.
Counsel Malofa?
Yes, I want to thank my husband for allowing me to run. And for being here and all my friends, the Granite Girls, and my neighbors for supporting me and helping me out, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody.
And since it's your first time, we're not gonna have you explain the Granite Girls.
I am curious.
We all met at the Granite restaurant.
Counsel Nian?
Thank you. One of the risks of running, I think it's eighth in the circle, is that you sound somewhat repetitive, as I'm sure Counselor Bouchard and Counselor Mattson and Counselor Rice Hawkins are feeling right now. So I just wish to reiterate my sincere appreciation and thanks to the voters of Ward Seven, the support of my family, and I'm looking forward to two more years on the council. It's always nice to have new faces here, new ideas and fresh thoughts, and it'll be a very, very positive, good two years. So thank you to everybody.
Counsel Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. At the risk of sounding repetitive, I too want to thank the voters of Ward Eight for voting for me, although it's true. And then we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of things that we need to be considered of, and we are still dealing with the pandemic, but I do believe that we've got a great group of people to work with, and we have the opportunity to listen to our constituents and find new ways to do the best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I too would like to thank the voters of Ward Nine and appreciate their confidence in me once again in this recent election. And of course, I want to thank my family, and I do want to thank my friends. I have a great circle of girlfriends that have been, they're very encouraging, and especially in this COVID times, to have a circle of friends and you can have a bubble and good friends that let you know and keep you real. So I really appreciate them, but most of all, I want to thank all the members of the council and their faith in me and to electing me once again mayor pro tem. So thank you all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the voters of Ward Ten for their confidence and for their support and for the great conversations. This is my third term, second full term on council. I've had wonderful conversations across the ward and across the city about what is working in Concord and what we could do better, and I am so proud of the conversations this council has had that continues to invest in our critical resources, the staff that helps support those, and some of the honest conversations we're having to move forward in places where we could do better. I'd like to thank my husband, Brian, who makes this possible when he's at home right now cooking dinner with the kids and doing the shower prep before school tomorrow, my children, Annabelle and Teddy, who are watching, little kiddos, and my parents, who are also watching. I am very excited to serve on this council, and thank you to my colleagues for all of your advice and support as we work together, make sure Concord is strong, healthy, welcoming, inclusive. Thank you.
So I had a friend of mine ask me today, said, "Do you come up with inaugural remarks?" And I said, "You know what? About year eight, I think I stopped that." So, so no. But I do, I do want to take the opportunity to first say to Candace Bouchard, it is wonderful to have you as mayor pro tem. You've done an excellent job throughout our tenure, and I have absolute faith when, that if I can't be here, we are in great hands, and congratulations. It's well deserved, that's for sure. Let me also say welcome to Counsel McLaughlin. Counsel Brown, it's wonderful to have you here and join us. It's, I had the opportunity to sit with both of you, and I have no doubt that each of you will hit the ground running, and the voters in both Ward Five and Six are very lucky to have both of you, so congratulations and truly welcome.
Thank you.
Not only do I want to thank all of you around the table who have chosen to serve again and to run and put your name on a ballot, to be out there, to be judged, and to, it can be a scary task, but what I really want to say is thank you to all of your families. Because as you've all said, it is absolutely 100% true that none of us, none of us can do this without the support of our families and friends and loved ones and such, because they do keep us honest, as you said. So I want to thank all of your families for giving you to us and to spend time together and to, I think, steer this great community that we have into a real positive way. Want to say thank you to the voters of the city of Concord. It has been a real honor and privilege to be able to serve both in that seat over there. And in fact, I think those days were probably most fun, but being here has been wonderful in the past 14 years, sitting in the seat, so. But as I talked about your families, there's no doubt that I could never, never have done this alone. It is not without any surprise, any you and any the community, that without, I call the commish or T'ra or whatever, but without Tara Reardon being there by my side and making sure that I'm on the right path and such. Love you very much, and you make a huge difference in my life. It's a big deal. I thank you. And then there's my son, Jackson. Campaign manager, kid who broke out the new sweatshirt tonight to come here with us, you know. Jackson, as some of you know, Jackson and I, we now work together. So I get plenty of insight from him throughout the day, that's for sure, and he definitely keeps me young. But it is a real privilege to be able to work with not only my son, but I also have the opportunity to work with my father. So to be able to work with two generations, three generations together and to be able to come here and to share with you all, it means a whole lot. My life is really blessed and such, and I just want to say thanks. I also want to say that, you know, it's been fascinating over the course of my tenure that I've served with well over 40 different councillors sitting around this table. But the interesting thing is, there's only been one city manager that I've served with as mayor and one, obviously, prior to that when I was over there in Ward Ten. But this city is so blessed to have you as our city manager. You are head and shoulders above everyone in this state. You are by far the best city manager. You are, I listened to the other managers, I've listened to the other mayors, and you are but the top-notch, the role model across the state. and you are but the top-notch, the role model across the state. And the city is incredibly lucky to have you. So the other thing I wanted to simply say is that I don't think they get enough credit, and that is our city employees. Our city employees are the ones that really make this city run. It's the police who put themselves on the line every single day. It's the firefighters who are out there putting us out there for us and the stresses that they've all felt through COVID and such. But it's also our people who work at General Services, the people who are plowing the streets, making sure our kids get to school safely, making sure that commerce is continuing to happen each and every day. It's the people who are making sure that our library is open, our recreation is occurring. It's the people who work in City Hall, who I think sometimes are the unsung heroes because, you know, our stuff runs so, so well. I mean, we run elections. You never hear a peep about our elections. And why? Because our clerk, Miss Bonifant, makes sure that they're well taken care of. And our election officials are well-educated, incredibly well-run. It's our collections, our assessing, planning, community development. It's right down the line. So I really, my hat's off to our employees. We try to be as supportive as we can around this table. Obviously, there's always constraints that we have, and we can't do everything always right away. But I just want to make sure that they understand how much we appreciate all they do for our city. So with that, I will stop, and I will just say that a couple of things, housekeeping. Number one is, we're going to put our picture back up in City Hall. And we have a gentleman who has done our pictures in the past, and he'll do, he's agreed to do them again. He doesn't know that yet, but he does. So I'm probably going to do them at the priority agenda setting, because I think the 10th, we're going to be pretty busy and the room should probably be fairly packed, I'm assuming. So we're meeting again on the 10th, that's our next meeting. On the 17th, which is the following Monday, we'll be meeting for our priority.
It's a city holiday.
We're going to meet on the 18th, which is. Some things never change. So we'll meet on Tuesday, the 18th, to our priority agenda setting. And I'll have the photographer here, and so although it's priority agenda setting, make sure you wear something you want up on the wall in the picture. Means I have three weeks to exercise, so. You can do it, Your Honor.
Good luck.
But, so we'll do the pictures that night, and then we'll have those pictures developed and framed. We'll put them back up on the wall. So 10th, 17th, and then with the priorities.
10th and 18th?
18th.
10th and 18th?
What time?
I'm going to make that on the 18th. What time would you like to do it?
Anytime you like.
Would you mind doing it earlier than later?
Six. Can we do six?
Six work for everybody?
Sure.
So, okay, 6 o'clock then. And we're going to, I'm going to wait to set the place because we may not, we may move away from here and try to do some other place. Okay. So 10th, 18th, and then, of course, the 18th, we'll have the pictures taken, and that will go up. Did I miss anything?
You're good. Great.
All right. Madam, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd just say, thank you for the kind words. I'll pass all those comments on to city staff. It's been, it's been a great two years. You're coming off a great two years as a council, and I expect the next two years to be just as good or better. I think the economy is turning, and things are, things are falling into place for a lot of initiatives that we have and want to undertake. So I'm really looking forward to working with you over the next two years.
Anybody have any else? Any questions, comments, concerns? Wonderful to see you all. We'll set this as a pattern, quick meetings like that. Is there a motion to?
Great precedence.
I'm going to adjourn, Your Honor.
Motion made and seconded. Do we adjourn? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say a seven. Thank you so much. Good to see everybody.